I have one question about the minutes.
Okay.
The next to the last paragraph, it says the planning commission reviewed the final plat of the Meadows subdivision, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
And there was discussion about lot 22.
Yes.
I don't know if that word calling belongs there or if it was culling with a C U L L. I'm, I'm, I'm learning something new either way.
I think calling out, I think naming the square footage calling out, that's what I was going for. Was that what you're asking me?
I just didn't know if that was what we intended.
If, if it is. It's up to you. If you want. I, I don't know. All, all it's doing is, uh, the only change that was made was that, uh, lot 22, the buildable square footage was added to the, uh, to the plat. So I could word it like that. Calling, I don't know if calling is the word, word either. I don't know if calling is either, but.
You know, no, you call, call a herd of cattle or a cow, you know, we call the deer population.
Yeah. I don't think we want calling, but I don't, okay. Um, calling.
Okay. It's okay.
Noting, um.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with what, with the way it is. I just didn't know if that was for sure exactly what we meant, but that's, if it is, then that's okay. Clip, maybe clarifying.
Clarifying, yeah, clarifying is good, or.
Okay.
All right. If, um, if there are no further additions or corrections, the minutes stand as approved. Okay. Looks like the only thing on the agenda. All right. There are two things on the agenda. Let's go on to the rezoning of the three properties, Bob.
Okay. So there are, um, they, we're trying to rezone, uh, this property. I'm going to show you parcel number 32 first. This is the parcel, uh, that is off of the road behind Jernigan, behind, uh, several houses in the background. That's about, uh, 11 or 12 acres. It's just off of, uh, highway 64. And you can see that, uh, the other two properties in question here that are, that they also want to rezone are this property right here, this long skinny property and this, uh, lot number four over here. So, uh, that, those are the three properties in question. So I'm going to show you how they all fit together. So, uh, the buildable area on this property is more than likely back here in the back part of the property. All right. Back here behind or close to where this little narrow entrance is that's to the north. And you can see that to the south, it connects directly to, uh, an existing apartment complex over here in the back. And then there are a few single family homes in the front, one, two, three of them actually in front of, in front of there, but there's really not going to be any of, uh, far as I know, uh, you guys, you can clarify, clarify it if I'm wrong. Uh, there won't be any building on, on this side of the property, uh, at this point. It's over here is where they're going to do all the buildings. Is that right?
Well, we're going, the plan was to put an office, uh, on right there at the Jernigan as you exit in, into the property.
Yes.
And, and then, you know, we, we had, you, we needed pencil it out. We potentially could put one retail, I mean, one, uh, residential building there, but I think you're correct. You know, for us, we have the power line and also a sewer line that runs,
through here.
Through, right through there. So.
Yeah.
And then you got a low drainage spot. So back where this field is in the middle, there is a little bit of slope there, but that's where I anticipate the bulk of the, the residential development to be.
But you're still wanting that, uh, lot number four to be zones residential, even though you discussed something other than that.
Multi-family residential.
It, it will be multi-family, um, zoning.
When you see here, they all are put together here. Sorry.
Yeah.
There's lots of going from high density to multifamily. And then, uh, lot, uh, parcel 31, which is this parcel going from actually light manufacturing to multifamily. So that, that, so that whole section there would be multifamily.
Mr. Pope, when you say an office up front, you're referring to an office that would be a rental office for the.
That's right.
Okay. That's, that's what was confusing me.
Yeah. I'm sorry. It's, it's, it'll be an office community building.
Okay.
Rental office for the property and then we'll have a community facility and inside of it, we'll have a exercise room, computer center. Uh, there will be a kitchen and area to have a, a big, um, area to have parties and receptions and different things like that.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, all this will come up at a later time. It's just the use and the use seems appropriate considering the location and the, uh, infrastructure.
The context.
Has anybody spoke to the, uh, homeowners?
That was going to be my next question, Matt.
Not yet. No, we would do that in anticipation of, uh, the public meeting, which would come probably in February.
Okay.
Okay.
Public hearing, I mean, sorry.
I have a question.
Yeah.
All right. So I own the property at this point and right now it is residential. And if this sale does not go through, but y'all rezone it to multifamily, am I going to have to come back if I want to sell it and, and rezone it again? Or how does this work?
I would say you would.
Let me look at my.
Jim, somebody, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to look at my, let me look at my zoning ordinance real quick.
It would depend on the use that of the new sale. As long as if we rezone it multifamily, if you sold it to someone else for multifamily.
Yeah, but she's saying if she doesn't. If the use changes, if this, if this falls through and it's no longer the use that she needs, it would have to be rezoned back.
No, actually multifamily residential, you can put single family homes on it if you wish.
Okay.
Okay. That's fine.
That's good. Okay.
The only difference between multifamily and, and regular residential is that, uh, you can put apartments on a multifamily residential, which you can't on other, uh, in other zones.
Okay.
And you can farm on multifamily.
Yeah, you.
You can farm anywhere.
It's easier to go the other way. It's harder to go the more restrictive way.
So it seems like this change would make the land more, um, versatile.
Yes. Well, it would be marketable in that it would already be zone multifamily residential if, uh, if another, um, company were to come in. If, if this particular deal doesn't go through, another, another company could come in and actually purchase the property for multifamily residential or single family homes.
The only issue would be you would lose, didn't you say part of it was zone, um, industrial?
This.
That would have to go back if you wanted.
That little road, that basically is a road back there.
Yeah. It didn't look very wide.
It's not, it's not much to it. And this light manufacturing, I, I know you, a lot of you have been back there. You kind of know what it all looks like. It's just basically right here on the road itself is where the light manufacturing is. And I don't even think it's, it's not really that anymore. It's just kind of commercial there right now.
Okay.
There's a towing company there in, in this one building over here. I'm not sure what's in the little warehouse.
Okay. Do we have a, a motion to recommend this rezoning to multifamily?
I'll make that motion.
Who made the, uh, George?
George, yep.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ronnie, any questions, discussion?
This is, uh, you're trying for a grant for this. Is that correct, guys?
Yes, we're applying to, uh, THDA, which is the Tennessee Housing Development Agency for tax credits, which will be used to, uh, sell all those tax credits will be to bring equity into the deal.
Right. So it may or may not actually get funded this time around.
The, the application process is competitively awarded and, uh, your county is one of the higher, uh, counties on the, on the list. Uh, there's, there's four different pools and your county is, is, uh, number two on the list. So it's got a, you know, is, is, it's got a fair, a very strong shot at getting awarded. That's why we're, we're there. Wouldn't be surprised if you would not have other developers looking in your, your area as well. But, uh, but yeah, we're very hopeful. Um, we like this piece of property. We like where it's located. We like that it's adjacent to other, uh, multifamily product. Um, uh, your community is growing and, uh, there seems to be a shortage of houses. Tennessee, the state is aware of that. That's why, you know, they, they put you high on the list is that this basically is a county need score list and they put you, uh, close to the top, uh, for that reason.
Um, question for Jim. Jim, you there?
Yep, same.
Okay, um, if we do this and the deal falls through and someone else wants to come along and take the same piece of property and put in a, um, PUD for small detached, single family residence, would we have to change the zoning for that or can it go in multifamily?
Yeah, the PUD would be an overlay, so you'd probably leave the zoning as is if they wanted to do that.
Okay.
But that subdivision would come through the planning commission again.
Right. That's correct.
I just wanted to add that extra layer of, um, of knowledge that it's going to be very versatile.
Okay.
Yeah. And also to support, uh, your recommendation, you know, this is, uh, adjacent to an existing multifamily district, which is helpful and also adjacent to a high density residential. So it'd be different if you're putting this out in, um, an area of single family zoning or large lot zone. That would be a different story. So this, this is a very appropriate move to recommend approval of this. This would be the, the spot in town where you'd want this to happen.
Yeah, it looks like. Okay. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, George?
Aye.
Matt? Matt?
Aye, sorry.
That's all right. Judy?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
And Richard, I guess, didn't make it. Are you there, Richard? No, he didn't make it. Okay.
All right. Motion passes. We make recommendations.
So this will go to the board, um, on, uh, for just, uh, discussion on, uh, June, I'm, I'm sorry, January 5th at the workshop and then to the board meeting on the 11th for first reading if the board so desires. And then the second reading, if it all goes through and the, and the, um, actual, uh, public meeting will be on, I'm sorry, the public hearing will be on February the 8th.
Is that between the two meetings, between the two board meetings? Okay.
Yeah, it'll be on the 8th. The public hearing will be on the 8th, right directly before the board meeting.
Now, does that, does that fit your timeline?
Yeah, our, our application to do March the 3rd.
Okay.
So we can be, uh, it'd be nice to be several weeks ahead of that. But I think, um, Mr. Turner, you said it'd be, uh, late February or latter part of February is when your meeting is. Is that right?
No, it's February the 8th is when the second meeting is big.
Is that the final meeting?
That would be the final hearing. Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, that, that'd be, that's almost a slant of month. So we should be in great shape.
That's kind of why we called this meeting now so we could get it all in order, in order to get it through on the 8th.
All right.
Well, if we needed to do something, if the board needed to do something quicker than that, we could, we could talk about a special meeting in January for the second reading if we needed to do it quickly.
Okay. Uh, you know, I, I, I'll leave that up to you. I think the 8th would be fine, but if it works better for you, we'd be obviously open to that.
Well, no, it's, it's fine with us. It's just sometimes people need quicker answers than the normal schedule allows.
Sure. I, I think we'd, we'd be okay.
Okay. All right.
Oh, thank you.
No, thank y'all. We, we very much appreciate you considering this and, uh, we, um, we look forward to proceeding forward with this, assuming that, uh, zoning is approved and, uh, we're excited about being a part of your community.
I am assuming that, uh, these meetings will continue online, but I don't know that for sure. I don't think the governor has made that decision yet. I haven't heard. Have you heard, mayor?
He has indicated that he's going to continue the authority, but he has not actually done it yet.
Okay.
He always waits till, you know, two days before the order expires to extend it.
Right.
But I understand he is going to.
Okay.
Okay. Item five.
That's it.
I, I have a question.
Five is that? Item five is the recommendation.
All right. So do we have any other business? I'm lost with it.
I have a question, Betsy.
Okay.
Uh, there are three residential houses there on Jernigan Road. Right here. Is one of those houses belonged to Alderman French?
This house right here belongs to an employee of ours, um, number one, a lot one. Uh, I'm not sure who the other houses belong to.
Okay. I'm just trying.
French is across the street and down the road.
Okay. This is, this is Mike French's property down here in number 41, where the turn, turn row apartments are, and then they're also across the street.
No, there's a house there and then there's another parcel. There's a parcel between that and, uh, French's property.
I was just trying to identify if we had, you know, who, who interested parties might be and, and where they were in relation to this.
Can we go ahead and?
In foreclosure? It's, um, seems like I saw one that's in foreclosure in one of those three areas and one of those three residential houses.
I don't know for sure. I don't know for sure.
The one you're talking about is, is the lot that says one on it beside the multifamily?
Yeah.
That one was in foreclosure. I don't know if it still is.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Judy?
Okay, um, oh, with all of this, this extra people, are we going to need to widen Jernigan?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
Cause that's going to be a lot of new traffic on Jernigan too.
We're looking, we're, right now, we're thinking 56 units.
Okay.
The 56, think about it, it's 56 homes.
Which is the same amount that we have at Turn Row.
Yeah.
I think we're okay for a while. It would be nice to upgrade that, but I think we're all right as far as having to.
Okay.
A question I received is whether we would put a caution light or something out on highway 64.
That would be a T-DOT, uh, decision, I believe, Tim.
Okay.
Well, it looks like we have the ability to widen it there. That part of Jernigan is wider than it is when you get further down anyway.
Uh huh.
All right.
What we need is sidewalks.
Yeah.
Through there.
And I, I would think.
Bob, I'm going to get my sidewalks at some point down at the street. I may have to run three more times, but at some point.
I would think with the apartment complex, I would think that your, um, your, uh, grant, um, points would go up with having that many additional apartments as well, wouldn't it?
Well, the only, the only grant that we can get to put the sidewalks in would be that, uh, transportation alternatives grant, that multimodal grant that's only a 5% match, that won't work. So, uh, so, so the TA, the transportation alternatives grant would work, uh, and they are considering changing the parameters of that grant so that the, uh, all the engineering is included in the grant, uh, amount. So if that happens, that would, uh, lower the amount of money significantly by, well, $75 to $100,000 on a million dollar grant. So, so it, it would, uh, it would cut out a lot of our match on that grant, uh, if we, if they did change that.
Ronnie, you might just get your sidewalk.
Well, y'all, I'll tell the developers now, they need to plan on building a sidewalk right there on their property on Jernigan Road.
Right here on that, right here.
And then we'll have to try to figure out how to hook on it on both sides.
Yeah, that, that's not a problem. We do that routinely.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate y'all looking at some of what we, we appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank you. We're excited about it and, uh, we hope to be a, a good neighbor, um, and, uh, be a part of your community. We just, I didn't tell you a little bit about Olympia. We, we are owners, developers, we're a general contractor. We are civil engineers and we're also property management companies. So we, we, we're going to be there. We're not just coming in and developing and, and putting something in place and then leaving town. You know, we're going to be there for the long haul because we'll manage the property as well. So, you know, we want a successful apartment, a well-run apartment. Um, so we're going to do a good job. I think you'll be very happy with this. And we're, we are based in Alabama. We are very active in Alabama and in Georgia and Tennessee. Uh, but we, we develop properties from Texas all the way to Carolinas.
And what did you say your company name was?
Olympia Construction.
Olympia?
Olympia.
Would you be interested in hiring any, uh, local, um, labor?
Yeah, we, we, um, we do not do any, um, self-performed construction work. Uh, we have, uh, subcontractors that we all, we, um, contract out. Uh, obviously our earthwork contractors, some definitely that we generally look for, for locally. If you've got a good, uh, local earthwork contractor, we would love to know about that, but we also consider, uh, uh, other trades as well.
We got a asphalt company right in town.
Very good. Very good.
All right then. If we don't have any other business, do I have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
Um, I have other questions.
Okay. Whatever.
Um, not pertaining to this project. Um, Mr. Turner, what is the latest? Can you update us on the, uh, the, not, um, is it Hedros subdivision, the one that, the one that, uh, needed to get their road?
Meadows.
The Meadows, yeah. What's the latest on that situation?
We have completed everything on our side and we have not, uh, really heard anything from the two parties involved. So, I mean, I think that the deal is going to still go through, but you know, at this point, I don't really know exactly where they are because basically we're out of the loop now. I mean, they have, we have done everything we're supposed to do on our end to make that all happen. So I'm assuming that one day we'll go out there and Mr. Hirsch will be paving the road or fixing the road first and then paving it. And we'll know that the deal went through. Uh, and then at some point we'll get a, we'll get a bond on the, uh, road and then, uh, they can go ahead and start building on the property. So, uh, on the properties. But everything has been completed. It's all registered at the county. Everything is ready to go.
The reason I ask is because, uh, a builder client of mine, um, I was speaking with him earlier today and asking if he needed any architectural plans and he said he was looking for lots and, um, he was specifically looking at Summerwood. And I said that I didn't know about that subdivision. Is there, is there any chance he can buy lots or is the big name builder buyer still buying all of them?
There are, there are a few lots that are not owned, that are not going to be purchased by them because they're owned by individuals or banks or something. Um, I don't know which, exactly which ones off the top of my head, but they won't be able to build in there until we get a, uh, the road fixed. So the deal we made with Mr. Hirsch, uh, was to fix the road first and then pave it and then we would allow them to build it. So until we get a road bond and we won't issue any permits. Um, I will, other than Meadows, uh, I've talked to, um, Mr. Wright, who owns Bluff Creek subdivision, and he just told me today that he sold his last lot in Bluff Creek. That's where you are, George, where you're building your house out there.
Right.
So there are no more lots available in Bluff Creek. Um, there are, there are just two lots out front, which are zoned commercially that he would, he's interested in maybe rezoning at some point to residential to build houses on. He had, he's discussing, he discussed a couple of things with me today about that. Uh, Nicholas Place is rolling back there, uh, on, on, uh, next to Jernigan Drive there.
It is.
And.
You got five houses going up right now.
Yes, sir.
Didn't know that.
Uh, for some reason, uh, the final plat was never recorded at the, uh, at the county. So, uh, he is going to put the final plat together and bring it back to us, uh, which has already been approved. He's just going to update it and I guess since we approved it in 2012, I guess we just need to uh, maybe sign it because it's already been approved. I don't know why it never was registered, but it wasn't registered at the county. Um, so in order, in order to sell his houses and get a legal description and have it all legal, he needs it. He needs it registered at the county. So he's going to take care of that for us. Uh, I can bring it back to the planning commission. We can review it or, you know, I don't know. What do you think, Jim? If it was approved in 2012 and it doesn't change at all?
It does change, Robert. It, it changes. It does change. It has to change because the, the way the side yards are set up in that subdivision precludes being able to build. Um, I mean, I've looked at the plat and I've read it and it says that there must be, um, 20 feet between structures.
Yeah, that's what the plat that's registered at the county says. But if you see the final plat that I have in my possession, which was approved in 2012 by the planning commission, it's got three and a half foot setbacks.
Okay. I see.
So there's a difference there.
I see what you're saying.
And, uh, it just needs to be, the final plat needs to be recorded or rerecorded or recorded for the first time and I, we can bring it back to the planning commission, but it was approved by the planning commission in 2012 and I have a, a copy of the minutes from 2012 on that.
I, I think it makes it cleaner to bring it back again to the planning commission.
I think so. I think so too. He's willing to do anything to get it, to get it. He's willing to do anything to make sure it's right.
Are you talking about Gregorga's place or Mitchell's place?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, if he's building houses, but we're going to have to look at a final plat, we might ought to get that done pretty quickly.
He's working on it right now, sir. He's planning on bringing it in January.
Okay, that's, we've, we've issued permits on, on lots that haven't.
We issued permits in 2012.
Building permits?
Yes, sir. That's why we, yes. There's a house that was built in 2012 in there, a single family home, that the only single family home in there was built in 12, sold in 14. Uh, and it was built, it was sold based on that plat that I have with the three and a half foot setbacks.
Okay.
I don't know how that happened. I wasn't involved back then. I mean, I was on the planning commission as the mayor, but you know, didn't really know anything.
It just seems to me that, um, if he's pulled permits to build these last four houses on a plat that's not even recorded at the, at the Fayette County courthouse, I mean, something's amiss.
Well, if you look at the minutes and you look at the plat, you'll know why we made the decision. So we will try to get it fixed and recorded properly.
Cool.
Well, let's get that done before he builds 22 houses in there.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I mean, so is that the extent of our inventory then?
There are no buildable lots. If that, if Meadows closes, there are no more buildable lots in subdivisions that remain for sale.
Okay. So when we're talking about what we're doing with Meadows, is that, does that include both phases or just the first phase?
Just the first phase, the, the undeveloped, uh, the undeveloped preliminary plats, there are, uh, Meadows has an undeveloped preliminary plat with about another 30 houses. And Bluff Creek does also. And, uh, Hedros has an undeveloped area of about 100, almost 200 homes.
Yeah.
So, uh, there are, you know, 250 or so, uh, uh, houses, I mean, uh, lots that have, have preliminary plats on them, but were never developed.
Yeah. Okay.
So I would imagine that would be the next step in any kind of development of property in town.
Does Glengarry have any?
Does Glengarry have any more?
No, Glengarry, all, their extra, their Phase Two was sold, uh, probably, I don't remember how many years ago that was, probably right before everybody started building again. But, uh, David Fowler sold those. And he sold, he sold that property. And so there really is no Phase Two in Glengarry.
Okay.
Mr. Pope, do you develop subdivisions?
Sounds like you have a need for one.
We do. One or two.
Yeah, well, we typically, we, we, we have done some subdivision development that that's basically locally in our, in our area, but we do apartments all over. Who knows?
Well, the guys that, the guys that own the properties right now have owned them since 2005 and 2006. So they're, you know, they're, we're in a position when they did that in '05 and '06 where they weren't that old. However, most of them are 75, 80, 85 years old now, and they're really not interested in starting new projects, even though they have these phases that are already preliminary platted. There's no developer for them and no builder. So, um, they are, most of them, I think, are working on deals. I think all, well, at least two of them are working on deals that I know of. So I don't know whether they're actually going to do it or close on them or anything, but Hedros and Meadows are, are working on a, on deals to maybe do those extra, extra phases. But.
Um, is there, is there something that we could, something that we might consider looking at? I can definitely talk to our team and see if, you know, particularly if we're going to be in that area doing apartments, then it might make sense for us to.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Just call me tomorrow and I'll
Okay.
give you some information.
All right, very good. I will certainly do it.
They might be interested in the rest of Hedros. It already has a preliminary plat, just needs to be built out.
Right, and well, Meadows and, and Bluff Creek are the same way. They're all, they're already been preliminary platted. They all have preliminary surveys done on the properties. All they need is a development, a contract and, and start to, you know, and that's it. You start construction after that. Yes, sir.
Uh, are you, and from what I've been hearing, the builders are actively looking for lots.
Oh, yeah. That's just one of my.
That's holding up the builders right now. They're, we have, the Hedros, uh, one builder came in and bought all of the remaining lots in there. I think there were 25 or 30 of them and there are right now 17 or 20 houses being built right now on that property. Uh, and then the Meadows is, they haven't closed that deal yet, but there are roughly 30 lots, uh, right now in that subdivision, uh, that, uh, the developer, I mean, the builder and the property owner have been working on closing that deal, but they've been really slow on doing it. I don't particularly know why. Uh, Nicholas Place was purchased probably two months ago and they're building, and they had 22, 23 lots in there. Those are zero lot line houses. And then the Meadows has another 30 lots behind it. And I just talked to him today. He would, he would be interested. He's not interested in developing it. He would rather just sell the preliminary platted property.
Okay, all right. Well, uh, I'll give you a call tomorrow and get some more information. And, uh, um, yeah, we're certainly always looking for a good opportunity and
Yes, sir.
That's, you know, we, we develop, you know, lots, we develop apartments, which is very similar to the lots, other than the, of course, you have to sell out of the lots as opposed to leasing of the units. But we've done it before, uh, just locally. It's generally where we've done it in the past. But yeah, we, I think it was obviously something we'd love to look at.
Sounds good.
Anybody else have anything going? Any other questions, discussion?
Uh, Betsy, Betsy?
Yeah, yes, Tim.
It, it's Tim, uh, just as a matter of information for, for the mayor and for Bob Turner, in case they didn't know, and Dana Osborne have an offer, a contract on their house here in the Meadows and it's sold in one day.
That's amazing, Tim.
Yeah, so, so, so they're, they're leaving, leaving the area and we'll have a different, different contact person over there sooner or later.
No, I've just, I had a real estate agent a couple of months ago tell me that they basically sell houses for list price or more. And usually in three or four days after they're listed.
Yeah.
It's a hot market right now.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. A lot of times they don't even get listed before they're sold. I'm running into that right and left. All right, everybody. One more time. Anything else?
One more, one more thing.
Now, okay.
Did, did you send out checks for this month? Because if you did, the mailman has failed again.
Good. I mean, I don't know what to tell you with the mailman. I, my Christmas card from my mother was left, was sent to me 10 days ago from Florida. Uh, I mean, it's just, I mean, the, the mail is just absolutely horrible right now.
You didn't answer his question. Have you mailed his check?
Yeah, the checks went out, yes.
The checks in the mail.
If you, if you, if you allow us to ACH it into your checking account or a bank account, you'll get it immediately.
Oh, heck no.
All you have to do is fill out the ACH, Matt, and you can get yours done too. And George and who else? Richard doesn't have his and I think there, there are four of you.
Can I say something?
Yes. Oh, Stacy does payroll, so she's the one to talk to here.
Uh, I didn't think there was a commit, planning commission meeting in November.
There was, there was no, there was no check due at the end of November.
Yeah, that's right. There wasn't anyone. You're right, Stacy.
Okay, so y'all are scaring me to death here. I thought I missed something.
No, you just know it's two, two for December.
I guess it was a trick question, George, and I failed, sorry.
Yeah, that, yeah, there have been multiple meetings in other months. I mean, keep skating out here or what?
Oh, I don't think that, that's not the way it reads as far as I know.
And Bob, is there a form for the ACH?
Pardon me?
That I can fill out? Because Stacy can attest that I have trouble with casting.
Stacy can give it to you, or Stacy can get it to you tomorrow, Matt. You can just stop by.
We can get it to you. I'll talk to Tammy. We'll get it to you.
Yeah.
We'll get to you.
Sounds good. Okay, I'm afraid to ask.
Sorry, I froze up my internet. It's something, so.
Hey. All right, somebody.
Anything else, George?
Matt, Matt, I got something, Matt.
Yes.
You have a, you have a check from September at the drive-through window for you that has been reissued.
Yes, I saw that. Thank you for doing that and sorry for the extra trouble.
Okay, you're welcome. That's all right.
All right, Betsy, are you going to get this over with so we can go home?
Ash, Betsy, can we go home?
Okay, is there any other business to be discussed?
Yes, let's.
Nobody, nobody. Barring anybody speaking up now, we, I, I say that we're adjourned. We're adjourned.
All right.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.